All right, at this time, we will call this meeting to order. May I have a roll call?
Trustee Anson, trustee Doral, trustee Myers, trustee Waschleger, trustee Lutke, trustee Connor, president Vanerstone.
Here. At this time, if you'd all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As everyone that's here is aware, we did make a change. This is the first meeting that's starting at 6:30. The meeting's moving forward. That has been changed. It isn't just a special change in time for just this meeting. Moving forward, the meetings will be at 6:30. Specifically, I'm saying this for anyone viewing that ends up wanting to come to the meetings. They are at 6:30 now. At this time, if there's any members of the public that would like to make public comments for items that are not on the agenda.
Good evening. My name is Lee Bromberger. I live at 140 Maple Avenue here in the village. I've lived here with my family for 28 years. I'm here tonight to share an observation and to make a request to the trustees. In mid-June, I had a significant surgery that requires me, as part of my recuperation, to do a lot of walking. So I've done a lot of walking this summer. And I'm going to tell you that you have a wonderful village here where people do not pay attention to the pedestrian walkways. If you were to sit down and actually count vehicles as they drive through town, very few people stop when there are pedestrians on the side of the street waiting to cross. And that's concerning to me. For two weeks, at the end of June into early July, I not only did have a cane, I had a neck brace, and I'm standing on the side of the road, and no one's stopping. The request I have is, I think you have a particularly dangerous issue right by my house. I live right where Warren hits Maple at 140, and on the southwest corner of Warren and Maple Avenue, you have a bus stop for Heartland Lakeside. You do have a painted pedestrian walkway across Maple Avenue. However, there is no signage. Now, I went, the last couple of days, I've been looking at the signs, and I walked down to East Park. So I walked down one block south along Maple, and there is another walkway at East Park and Maple, and there is signage there. I can tell you, I could stand for three minutes, literally in front of my house, and I can't cross the street in the morning, and no one's stopping. So I think you need a sign. And I've been watching. No one's stopping for those kids to cross the street either. Now, it's a little different in the afternoon because you have one of those big yellow buses with the stop arm that comes out, so everybody knows the law there. They're stopping, and the kids aren't able to cross the street. But in the morning, when they're going to the bus stop, and there is no bus, no one's stopping. So I don't know how you legislate that, and that's really not my job. I'm just telling you that people are not accustomed to stopping in this village at the pedestrian walkways. I have a part-time job in Milwaukee. I'm down on Brady Street a lot. Let me tell you, it is ingrained in people. I've seen it in Madison, too. People stop in cities. They get the idea. I know we've got signage right out here, right outside the front door, but I've noticed people don't stop there, even with the signs in the middle of the road. So I understand signage isn't going to cure everything, but I think you've got a liability in a potential dangerous situation at that corner at, you know, East Warren and Maple, on that southwest corner. I think you ought to look into that. It does concern me as a resident. By the way, in the years I've lived here, I've seen two people get hit by cars, two kids get hit by cars, right in front of my house. It's not nice to see. It's horrible. So I just wanted to apprise you of that, and I'll leave that. I know you don't have to act on anything I say in the public comments, but I did want to bring it to your attention because I do think it's significant. And I don't know, I love to brainstorm how you get people to start thinking about pedestrians, but no one on Maple Avenue is stopping for any pedestrians in the morning or in the afternoon at 5:00. And I think the signage would maybe help plant in their minds, oh, wait, there are crosswalks here. Maybe I need to be cognizant of that. You know, we're really good at slowing people down. We've got the light-up sign by the railroad tracks on Maple, you know, getting people cut down to, what is it, 35 or 25? But people are not conditioned to stopping for pedestrians. And that's, I think you've got to concern with that particular bus stop at Warren and Maple. So thanks for listening, and I appreciate your work.
If I could ask you a question? I wanted to ask, are you referring to, and I appreciate your comments in bringing it to the attention of the board, are you referring to anywhere that someone's waiting to cross the street, or are you talking specifically the areas that are designated the crosswalks?
I'm talking to specific designated crosswalks.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure to clarify.
And I'll tell you, the best place for crossing is actually by the BP station, right at the four-way stop, because you have to stop, you know? And so, I mean, you know, and so when people stop, you get out there fast, because sometimes they're not even going to wait for you, you know? And when you're in a neck brace and a cane, you're not exactly breaking land speed records.
Thank you.
Can you spell your last name for me?
Bromberger, B-R-O-M-B-E-R-G-E-R. And I live at 140 Maple.
And I just wanted to clarify as well, as president Vanerstone did, thank you also. Are you talking about when you cross from Maple to get to Warren, so you're crossing over?
Right, right in front of my neighbor's house. My neighbor directly south of me, the crosswalk's right in front of her house. She's got the wheelchair, you know, entrance, you know, into the crosswalk. I shovel it out in the winter for her.
Well, thank you for that.
Okay? So, I mean, yeah, but there's no sign at that crosswalk. You don't have one of those, you know, fluorescent green or yellow signs that you do have, as I said, down at East Park.
Okay.
Okay? And of course, there's one as you get to Capitol Drive, there's another one.
Thank you for clarifying.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you for speaking tonight.
Anyone else for public comments for items that are not on the agenda? Our first item on the agenda is a presentation by organizers of Team Emma event scheduled for October 5th, 2019.
My name's Dave Volk with the Lake Country Chiefs Football Organization.
And I'm Pat Enter from Enter Sports Grill and, of course, the Lake Country Beer Garden.
Well, we're trying to bring to your attention a situation where we have one of our coaches' daughters, if you've ever heard Team Emma, who is suffering from terminal brain cancer. And we, as an organization, find that she's part of our family, want to do something for her and her family, who are certainly also suffering, to an event that we're putting together at Nixon Park, with the help of Pat and others in our committee. We'd like to have, you know, some donations. We're putting baskets together to sell, and just a host of events from a dog parade. We hope to get the fire department there. We hope, even DPW, I think, is going to put some stuff there for us. There's Dave. So try and make an event that we can raise as much money as we possibly can. So you might see some signage around the Heartland area. You'll see it in the paper, as much as possible, and if you can get the word out, it'd be great. So just to give you a description, we're going to have a 40-40 by tent. We'll have tables in there. We have a bouncy house for the kids. We plan on having the Arrowhead football players there to help out the event with their football stuff on, and they can, you know, kind of, you know, run around with the kids a little bit. Pat has offered to have his beer garden, if you accept him for one more Saturday.
That's why I'm here, is to ask for that one extra additional day to have the beer garden open from 3:00 to 10:00, just specifically for their event.
And there'll be a band there also playing from...
7:00 to 9:00.
7:00 to 9:00. So we'll have everything, brats, hot dogs, ice cream. There'd be some, Culver's Ice Cream is donated. Most of the restaurants in the area have donated something or other to the program. Fox Brothers, we've got our brats and hot dogs, so on and so forth. So we hope to be a great event and raise a lot of money for her and her family. Kelly's helped us a lot in this program. There is a map, correct?
Yes, you guys have a map in your packet of the layout of where the tent would be and the possible two bouncy houses.
Regarding the beer garden and the band, at the time that the contract was signed with Mr. Enter, it was decided that it did not need to come for board approval and could be left up to the administrator. If the board decided that they wanted to vote on it, we can, however, the administrator or acting administrator has told me that he thinks that that would be just fine. We did that in case there was an instance where something was coming up, and there wasn't enough time, all of a sudden if...
Right, we're really pressed for time. We kind of did this on shoestring. We got a small committee together, and, I mean, three weeks later, here we are.
Yeah. No, I just wanted, we have spoken about it.
Oh, I thank you for that, yeah.
If the board would decide that we needed a vote, I think we know which way that vote would go. But if anybody on the board wants a vote, we could make a motion, but it is, it was, you know, approved when we signed the contract that, for extended days and things of that nature, that the administrator would be able to...
Appreciate that.
And I think that, I'll let Ryan speak for himself, but I believe that he indicated that he...
We did add it as an item made, and we'll get to it.
Yeah, so we'll get to it down, but I, you know...
Okay.
Do we need to discuss with the band?
That I don't, that was going to be the next thing that I was going to lead in with, because it sounds like that's what you're asking for. I don't know, I guess it's up to the board. I think it's appropriate, even though I'm sure all of us would say, yep, it's just fine, but I think it's appropriate that we would at least make some steps to go through the necessary, take the next necessary steps that other organizations have to, while I don't necessarily, and I don't think anybody on this board thinks you should have to, I think having some things in place, just keep it fair for everybody. Have you done, is this, this is your first time coming to the board? You haven't, have you submitted?
Never done this before, no.
Okay.
We did come, Jeff, we talked...
Yeah, absolutely.
We came to the park and rec board in September for approval of the event, which they did approve, and they did waive the fees to not have a fee since it was a fundraiser for this little girl. We told them that park board also approved to work with staff on the details, because at the time, it was kind of a fresh idea, and we had to kind of, they had to work on the details, get it all sorted. It was kind of a quick party.
Yes, yes, yes.
So myself and Dave Faltnier have been working with the group and the committee, trying to get everything organized for them, tell them what they need, and the next step, we felt, was to come and present it to you guys.
I think, I cannot speak for the entire board. I think that that's fantastic. The only thing I would ask is, Kelly, if you could work with them, just so we get, you know, the normal forms that we would get filled out?
Yeah.
Let's have those. They've already done a lot of it by showing where the tents are going to be, that kind of thing. Whatever needs to be done, if you could help them so that that can be done. Fees have already been waived, it sounds like, you know, obviously with the circumstances, the event is a wonderful event, but the circumstances for the reason of having to have the event are, you know, one that's sad, and we'd rather have people, you know, we'd rather have the organization get as much money as possible to go towards, you know, the thing.
Yeah, we don't have much time.
I'm very aware, very aware.
Also, thank you to Lake Country Chiefs, too. You guys are a great community advocate for the youth here in Heartland, as well as the other communities.
Thank you.
And things like this is remarkable, so I appreciate it.
We've been doing it for almost 29 years now.
Yep, you are a fantastic organization. You bring a lot of love and support and sportsmanship to our community, so thank you for stepping up for this family.
Thank you.
Who would we call to donate a basket or something for the auction or whatever? Are you going to have an auction for baskets?
Yeah, we're going to auction the baskets on those tables in the tent.
Okay, are you taking more baskets?
Yes, true.
Okay, who would?
We'll take as many as we can.
Who would we call, or what?
I could, well, you could call...
Kelly?
Dave Volk. Actually, Katie Reiners.
Oh, she's heading that.
She, well, Lisa, too.
I was going to say Lisa, I thought was doing it. I know Lisa's accepting them.
At the fire department?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll drop it at the fire department, yeah.
If you could, to make this easier, if you could email the village with the information, once you have it, with those phone numbers, email addresses, and any other necessary contact information for people that are interested. Not only will it make it easier for the village to answer those questions, if any questions do come into our village staff, but also if it turns out that we are able to, I don't know whether we are or not, but we can maybe post something or, you know, get it on either the village website or on...
That would be great, absolutely.
Something to that extent.
I could send you the flyers that we have, that we've had in the papers.
Because I will put a basket together, for...
You've seen the flyers?
On social media.
Pardon? It's all over social media.
You know, the flyers that look like this is in the paper today?
Okay.
I have those. I can email them to you or to the village.
Whatever you see appropriate.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you very much for your time. Please stop in the event. We'd love to have you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Pat, thank you for everything you do, too.
All your love.
Thank you so much for this community.
Glad to do it, glad to do it.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is consideration of a motion to approve the village board minutes from the September 9th, 2019 meeting. It has been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Abstain. That motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is a consideration of a motion to approve the vouchers for payments in the amount of $237,568.20.
I make a motion to approve the vouchers for $237,568.20.
I second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the vouchers in the amount of $237,568.20. Any discussion? I have something that I'd like to say about vouchers. In the future, I am going to, in the future, when we bring up the vouchers, we have certain rules in place for the village, being that there's a certain amount that department heads can make a decision on, there's a certain amount up to where then the department heads have to get the approval of the administrator, and then there's a certain amount of $25,000. When it's over $25,000, where they have to come for board approval, no matter what. I think it would be appropriate, because I don't even know how we would handle things if we did not approve the vouchers, considering most times, it's something that's already been purchased, and that voucher's already been done, because it falls under the authority of the administrator and the, and/or the department head, that I feel in the future that we will have presentation in the packets of the vouchers, but that an item can be on there, and it's not necessary for a motion to approve them, because by definition, that approval has already been given by the department head or the administrator. It still will be an item on the agenda in case someone wants to ask questions, or in case something found something to be inappropriate, or that funds were not spent in the right way, or anything that a trustee felt they wanted to say about them. But basically, instead of always going through the approver process, approval process, we will simply bring up that item, and if someone wanted to make, you know, a motion against something, they at that time could do them, but they will have, it still will be presented the same way in the packets, but I think that it just is a more, I feel it's a more consistent thing, because even if we made a motion to not approve the vouchers, I don't know, based on the way our rules are written, that we actually could do that, because we've already given that authority.
What dollar amount?
I believe it's $15,000, anything over $15,000 goes to the administrator.
But what about advanced disposal every month?
Of?
$35,000, our payment to advanced disposal.
Oh, because they're all together?
We just have...
And the insurance is in there?
We have monthly, we just have monthly or annual.
Okay, well, to save them time...
I'm trying to think of how you guys, is it, if it's an item we're physically purchasing, or like roads, you know what I mean?
Right.
Our insurance, too, is, you know, $49,000.
But we approved, we approved the insurance contract a year ago with Raquel's share.
Right.
That's what I'm just trying to figure out, you know, like the advanced disposal, that's a contract.
Right. How often do you foresee that happening? Just wondering, I mean, I have...
Probably every vouch, I mean, advanced is every voucher. That's where I'm getting at, like advanced is $34,591.
Okay. Now, I, and I think this is good to have this discussion, even though it seems like such a non-important thing. It's not very often that something like that gets debated. Would it not fall under the, would it not fall under the normal veil when we say, yes, okay, we're signing that, whatever that contract amount was with advance, before we even sign it, and then we pay it on a monthly basis?
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, it's a five- or seven-year contract.
As long as it doesn't go over, exceeds it tremendously, right?
Yeah, and it's all rate-based, so.
Right.
We'll look at it, we'll try and keep an eye on it, just make sure that we, I think, kind of what you're asking, I'm hoping, is if somebody wants to buy something over $15,000, we generally do this, it has to come to the board before that. Anything over $15,000, they should not be purchasing without your approval.
And that's kind of what I'm trying...
Even if you see the voucher, they should not have purchased it, that should be your approval, but maybe we just call it out as an item, is what you're saying?
Right.
I'm fine with that.
That, that is kind of where I'm getting to.
Yep.
We do get the vouchers, and as a board, we should, but the, and we should review them, but it is an authority that's given to, Ryan, I'm going to use you because you're sitting here. If Ryan signs off on something and says, yes, I think we should purchase that at $14,000, even though he's signed off on it, and we've already purchased it, he has been given that authority. If we want to say something to Ryan or do something with Ryan, or have a private meeting with Ryan, because we disagree with him purchasing that, or think it was done in negligence or whatever other reason, that he was, whatever, then we could take that up, but that would be something we'd be taking up with Ryan, and not necessarily a blanket, not approving the vouchers, if that makes any sense. So we will be reviewing them, and I think that if something has not been approved, then it's on there, and it's over the threshold, then we should do it, but I feel that signing a five-year contract or seven-year contract, when we say that we're going to pay...
Like we have insurance coming in April, and nearly in that contract for a year. You'll see that voucher two times.
Right. I guess I just, I don't, I want us to be consistent, I shouldn't say I guess, I want us to be consistent, and things that have already been purchased, we've given that authority. It doesn't mean we can't question it, but to have to say, we approve it, it's not like we can go get that back. We can't say, okay, here's your two-by-four that we don't approve you purchasing, give us our $2 back. So it'll be, if someone wants to make a motion, they can. Obviously, it's on the agenda that way. In the future, they can, but I will simply ask if someone feels the need to make a motion or, you know, or we can move beyond it. But if someone wants to make a motion, since it's on the agenda that way, I was just saying for this last time.
Motion to me.
We can, okay, I'm sorry, you're right, there was a motion a second. So in the future, we will do things that way, but it's been moved and seconded to pay the vouchers in the amount of $237,568.20. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Abstain. That motion is carried.
Real quick, so I think what I'll do is, in the future, we'll have, like, item three, consideration of a motion to approve vouchers for payment. Under it, I might put like an A, like I let the letter A, and just bring to your attention items that are over $15,000, so that if you want to talk about, discuss them. Because in theory, the way our PO policy works, anything over $15,000 should not be purchased until you get the blessing.
Correct. Correct. So anything under $15,000 in the future, we'll go right to either be Ryan and say, Ryan, you know, I have questions about this, or Ryan, why'd you do this, or the department head, or whoever.
Right.
All right. So now we have a consideration of actions related to licenses and permits. We have a bartender's operator's license for Aaron Vanderheiden, possibly VanderHayden, if I mispronounce it, I apologize. This expires June 30th, 2020.
I'll make the motion to approve his license.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve this license. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That license will be granted, that is carried. Next item we have is a consideration of a motion to adopt ordinance 826-2019, an ordinance to amend Chapter 82 of the Village Code pertaining to collection of forfeitures for non-moving traffic violations.
Also, second.
It has been moved and seconded to adopt that ordinance 826-2019, which is to amend Chapter 82 of the Village Code pertaining to collection of forfeitures for non-moving traffic violations. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried, that is adopted. The next item we have is a discussion and consideration of a motion to approve the final condominium plat for overlooked trails. This is being sent to us from the planning commission, so it has been reviewed by them.
Do you want to describe what the point of this is, Brian? Because I did have just some questions of, haven't we already done all of this? So I just want to make sure everybody understands what they're approving.
Thank you. So I'm getting used to the new time here. I apologize, I got a cold, too, so I'll try to speak as well as I can, and clearly, for the record. So what we're doing here, previously, we, about a month ago, we were with the planning commission to work through the process of CSM, which is in a condominium development, that's the process in which we dedicate the public portion of the development, the public improvements, roads, utilities, things like that. Now we're at the step where we need to define what are the common elements, the units, the limited common elements of the condominium, and that's what we have in front of us today. This is the condominium plat, based on the demand that we've seen in the development, which so far is going very well. We've got, we've had a tremendous amount of interest, and we have quite a number of people already lined up with our builder to talk through the building process. We decided to go ahead and plat the entire neighborhood up front. It is an option in a condominium plat to plat it in sections with expansion ability. In this case, we're going to go ahead and plat all 50 units together. So that's what is defined with, you know, some of the legal descriptions and otherwise in here. Along with that was the condominium declarations and other things that will get recorded to further establish the guidelines and rules that dictate the condominium, one of those which, because although, in a multifamily condominium, you'd see buildings defined on here, in this case, they're single-family homes, we don't know exactly what footprint will go on what unit. That's why it's described in the condominium declarations that the unit itself will default, and this is working with the Waukesha County Register of Ds, how they want to see it, to the parametrical boundary of the, of the unit, the walls, basically. The exterior, the walls up through the exterior facade will define the unit going forward. And then there's descriptions for limited common elements, which generally will be of the private use of the unit owner, like the driveway, the patio or deck area, depending on if that unit has such, and some of the immediate plantings around the unit, and then common elements, which is pretty much the rest of the development. Those documents go into great detail on how those things are defined, who takes care of what, and so on, but happy to answer any questions.
All right, you are putting, this has to do with north of the road, you are putting a path... You are putting, this has to do with north of the road, you are putting a passing lane on the south side also, correct?
Highway K improvements you're speaking of?
Yes.
Yes, on the south side, it'll be what's called a bypass, so that will kind of, we'll have to extend, yes, extend the pavement area to the south of where it currently exists. And to the north towards the development, there'll be acceleration, deceleration lanes, a protected turn lane if you're coming west or eastbound, so. Those, we had the permit from the highway department, they've since requested a revision, we're working through that revision before any improvements start there. Just as an update on the timeframe, we're anticipating being ready for curb and pavement second half of October, which would include those improvements to Lisbon Road, so.
Okay.
Just a motion to approve the final condominium plat for overlooked trails.
I make a motion to approve the final condominium plat for overlooked trails.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the final plat for overlooked trails, the condominium plat. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you.
Brian, don't forget your.
Yep, I'll grab it. Be back with the plan commission in six months. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next item we have is a consideration of actions related to a proposed planned unit development, also known as a PUD, for Sendix Food Market. This did go through the plan commission, it was in the packet so that people could review it, and do we have some member from Sendix here? If you'd like to just briefly, just very briefly.
Real quick, real quick before you start, the only action tonight after this would be to set a public hearing. If you, it's just review of the PUD. Hector and the representatives from Sendix are still working it out. So if you set the public hearing, all approvals will be October twenty-eighth, so it's still a month, but go ahead.
Ryan Thomas from Madison Maher Architects. We've come a couple of times to meetings, this is in addition to the back, about twenty-seven foot deep by the length of the building, and it'll allow for expansion of the inside of the store and remodeling of the inside of the store. This also includes the relocation of some of the storm water that's in the parking lot to a street improvement, including catch basins and extension further to the west that'll improve water collection on the street. Just as a briefing, I've been talking with the Rooker and Milky about their concerns about how the PUD ties together. We're going to be meeting out in the site with the contractor, the landscape architect, and them just to have a final conversation about what the document wording will be for the PUD. They just want to understand the sequencing of construction and how to create the right language so that you guys have teeth in the PUD to enforce the replacement of the landscaping or future considerations that we can't predict as far as what the growth of the trees or anything like that. So we're getting very close on that, I think that meeting will happen in the next week. And again, I've been working also with Hector to describe any language, we've looked over his document, we're going to get him some feedback on that. And if you have any other questions, I can answer those.
I'm a little concerned about that road in the back. If Sendix is going to move that back, if there's a semi that's coming down that whole way, will they be able to pass Sendix and then make that little jog to the right to get out the driveway?
So the existing truck that accesses, accesses Sendix will remain on the east side, the loading dock on the west side for Sendix will not remain anymore.
Behind, between them and the road, between them and the road, you know, behind them?
Yes.
So this portion right here will be cut off, they'll still be able to come in here and they have full access.
I'm sorry, I'm talking to my head.
What?
So the road behind, it goes behind all those different.
The access road?
Yes.
Yes, on the back?
It'll be open all the way and a semi can go through.
So the access road is closing, so we can put an addition there. The street is open and we would be using the street to go between one side of the parking lot and the other side of the parking lot. There's room behind the parking lot to pull the truck forward and back in. The owner of, the developer owns the whole property and he's had conversations with the other tenants about access to the back of the property. We do feel like trucks have access to the other side of the property, but it's not going to be driving through. It'll be using the street to pass behind. The loading dock that's currently for Sendix on the west side will be removed, so there will be no Sendix trucks that will be required to go into that area. There'll be a dump, there's still dumpsters back there and there'll be a screen loading, dumpster enclosure for Sendix on that side.
Anybody have any other questions for the member presenting or the person presenting for Sendix?
I'm ready to make a motion for a public hearing. I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to set a public hearing on the, I'll let the person that made the motion clarify, I know what you meant, but can you just clarify?
I'd like to make a motion to set a public hearing for Monday, October twenty-eighth as part of the regular village, scheduled village meeting.
Thank you, I just want you to. It's been moved and seconded to set a public hearing on the matter of the Sendix expansion for Monday, October twenty-eighth as part of the regular village board meeting. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. So that public hearing will be on Monday, October twenty-eighth. Please remember, the meetings do start at six-thirty PM now.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, other items. We have discussion and consideration of a motion to approve a request to extend operation of the Beer Garden in Nixon Park. I kind of talked about this a little bit at the beginning of the meeting, but I'll go with whatever the board feels comfortable with. We have a Packer game event on September twenty-sixth, and we have the Team Emma event on October fifth. I suppose we haven't had necessarily an answer from the administrator on whether he did that or not, so we could just make a motion to approve one in each, in two different motions, or we can make one motion, or we could have one motion that approves both of them, however the board sees fit.
Can I just say one thing?
Absolutely, you could say more than one thing.
The Packer event, you know, we ran.
It a few weeks ago is in conjunction with Analytics, who has created the Enroot app. Is anybody here familiar with the Enroot app?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's also trying to get the information out about Enroot because it's specific to downtown, well, it's specific to Lake Country. So that's why we're working with Reggie George, I'm sure many of you know Reggie. So we're working in conjunction with them on the Packer game event, much like we did a few weeks ago when the Packers played the Bears. So it's also trying to get that Enroot out, that Enroot app out for people to download it and get connected with Lake Country.
Okay.
So that's the purpose of it.
Awesome. So that, could you say it one more time?
Plus, if we didn't have it, nobody would be there.
It is the Enroot app and how do people get that?
They download it, they download, they just go to, just go to apps on their iPhones or whatever phone they have, search Enroot, N-R-O-O-T-E, it'll pop up, it's free to download, and it's got everything local on it. They promote the events, we're going to try to get the Team, Team Emma event on it. I know there's a lot of different things on there already, you know, the street dance was on it and, you know, all the local events, so it's kind of in its infancy right now, trying to get going, so, but that's kind of one of the primary reasons for doing it as well.
One step at a time.
Absolutely.
Awesome, thank you.
Thanks.
The reason I brought him forward, just, we had no complaints with the first Packer event, but we never really approved it, he kind of texted me that day and I just went through the board. Then the October one, just because originally the splash pad in that area was Labor Day, now it's a month after, so I just wanted to make sure you guys were all fine with that.
And I still feel comfortable letting Ryan make that decision.
I do too, and I do want to, I guess I will, I think we all do, especially like what you just said, Donna, I commend Ryan for actually, even though he doesn't have to, bringing it forward to the board. It just is, it's, I think it's very good for the village that there's this much cohesiveness on the board and with the staff and I think we're going in the right direction and communication, but he didn't have to, but he did, and wants our approval and wants to make sure we're on.
So he's all approved?
I second what Donna said.
Ryan, he's all approved?
They're all approved.
Unless anybody on the board, if anybody on the board feels uncomfortable allowing that approval from the administrator and wants a motion, obviously they could, you know, request, make one right now. All right, those are approved.
Thanks, Pat.
Thanks, Pat. Okay, so the next item we have on the discuss, on the agenda is discussion and consideration of a canteen agreement with Flanagan Dorn Post two-nine-four, American Legion. Obviously, this is something that is longstanding here in the village or has been going for a while. I don't hear complaints on it, the board, if anybody has things they want to say on it, but it is something that has been consistently done year over year. Sir?
And as you may remember, you approved this agreement, and afterwards, I was approached by a representative of the Legion, and he was requesting some slight changes. So staff felt it appropriate to bring it back to you because it did change. They're only playing two months instead of four, and they'd like their deposit back earlier because they're not playing as long. So basically, those are the two changes.
What did our board say?
They approved it.
I have a question, Mike.
Yeah.
Can you, I'm looking at the first page of the agreement where it says, now therefore the village in the "ha" hereby agrees as follows.
It's probably a typo, it should be Legion.
We need to strike that.
Yep, we'll change it.
Where is that?
The first page.
I'll wait for that one, first page.
Bowl? It should read the Dorn Flanagan, American Legion.
Yes, sir, thank you. And just to clarify, Mike, Lake Country baseball softball has no responsibility.
Correct.
To this agreement.
Correct.
Thank you.
Were they in it?
They own the Legion ball division.
But the agreement is with the Legion.
Dorn Flanagan to run the canteen.
Gotcha, okay.
Correct, has nothing to do with the actual game.
Thank you.
Right. Yeah, definitely change that hopper.
You need waiting for a motion, sir?
Motion. Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement between Dorn and Post two-ninety-four, American Legion.
It's been moved and seconded, I do have a question for the person that made the motion, did you intend to say in there that you'd like that wording changed from "ha" to Flanagan Dorn to represent the organization that is going to be?
Yes, I thought that's what we just talked about.
We did, I just want to make sure, I'm just trying to keep everything.
It'll be in the motion that we do, don't do it with "ha-ha."
No.
We'll do it with American Legion.
And Rick, that's what you intended as well, for that motion to be that way, all right. It's been moved and seconded to approve the motion between the village and the Flanagan Dorn Post two-nine-four, American Legion, with the fact that we want the wording changed on the agreement from "ha" in the one area to that post. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I've seen.
That motion is carried. Next item we have is a consideration of a motion to affirm the two thousand nineteen-twenty-twenty salt order in the not-to-exceed amount of two thousand, two hundred tons at seventy-four dollars, seven cents per ton through the state of Wisconsin bid in the estimated amount of one hundred and sixty-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars, forty cents.
Also move, we approve this motion since we don't have any other choice.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the motion to purchase the salt for one hundred and sixty-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars, forty cents. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried.
Can I ask a question?
Thanks, Mike.
Sure.
Mike, quick question.
Is there only one place to get the salt or do we shop it or is, I don't know, I have no idea.
There's only one.
There's only one?
That's why Mike said we don't have a choice.
We.
Well, I know, that's why I was asking.
We do get in on the state bid.
Okay.
As do almost everybody in Waukesha County, and they bid it out every year.
We're coming from where?
It comes out of Milwaukee. It was North American salt, and they're always, we shopped last year, as I put in the memo, when we started getting short, and the prices we were getting were double and triple of what we're paying. And by going with the state, we are getting the best price.
So can I tell on that?
Sure.
And I think that some people know, some don't, but what it does is that actually it's a conglomeration, so you have municipalities all around the entire region and all around the state.
Yep.
So we buy it in one huge, massive bulk, even though instead of it just being Heartland, getting ours, we're buying it and we get that cheaper rate.
I was curious as to where it actually originates.
Yeah, I don't know where it originates, but it does come, it gets shipped into Milwaukee.
It does get shipped into Milwaukee.
Sometimes they can't get here.
As I understand, it comes through the St. Lawrence Seaway, and last year that froze over and that caused part of the problem.
That is exactly what happened.
We should just start throwing salt on it. The other advantage to this contract is we're allowed to put a reserve on that we
don't have to buy.
Oh, that's nice.
You know, last year we bought it because we were getting short. If we're okay this year, we're not required to buy it, so that's quite an advantage.
Does any of this, that brine or whatever that you guys put down?
We buy the brine from Waukesha County, but they make it with the salt.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask, is that salt?
Yeah, we buy brine from Waukesha County because we looked at the cost of buying equipment to make our own and it's cost prohibitive.
Okay.
A few years ago, we ran out of salt because Mike didn't order enough, and we had to go to Minneapolis to get it, it cost like fifty, fifty percent more.
Did you go up with your truck?
I, no, I took a U.
Twenty-five pound bags?
It was.
Well, and it was, it was trailings, it wasn't even rock salt.
Yeah, it was tough.
Well, we're going to have salt this year.
You bet.
And we're not going to use it if we don't have to. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is discussion and consideration of a motion to approve replacement of the gutters on Village Hall.
If you recall, this item was tabled, Mr. Faulkner was going to get numbers or board members were going to reach out, did you?
Board member gave me a number Thursday, I contacted Friday, no response as of yet.
Okay.
So as you recall, I put it out to five different companies, I received a bid from only one of them five, and you opted to table it again for this board meeting. So the price on it was twenty-seven, six seventy-five.
Could you say that again, I'm sorry?
Twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars.
So one half of the roof is twenty-five hundred.
Yeah, it's because of the specialty.
It's because of the.
Tile. Because of the removal of the tile.
Maybe we could get rid of that whole roof, but again, then you're looking at even higher costs.
It's got to be done.
I'm talking about replacing.
And it might be done sooner than later.
Um.
Because of what's happening.
Right.
To be honest with you.
Before winter. Right.
This company that proposes this, I have to make sure they can get it done this year.
So that's the concern.
So we might be running out of weather.
We're getting too close.
To get it done.
Yeah, and when I talked to Dave, his big fear is the building just off of Capitol that kind of, when water got behind, froze and collapsed.
I remember.
That is our major concern because of the roof. This roof has been, been looking at being replaced for the last six, seven years, so it's, nobody wants to touch it.
Is it in the budget already?
It's been in the budget for some.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we have the money, it's just.
Getting somebody to do it, okay.
We better do it if we want to do it quick.
Can we make a motion then to allow Dave to go with the bid that he does have?
I would agree.
For the twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-five.
Do you want to put that contingent on getting it done this year? Because if they can't, then we could...
We could revisit.
Look to you guys.
I'd let Dave come back to us if he can't get it done this year. That way, go to the company and say there's not a contingency, you got to do it this year, otherwise we might not be able to use it.
Okay. So the company was Langer, Langer Roofing.
Yep. It's been moved and seconded to approve the replacement of the gutters on Village Hall for $27,675. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried.
Thanks for sticking that out.
Thank you.
No.
Not to exceed.
At this time, if anybody has any announcements, anybody have any? I don't have any.
Chief. Chief. Hello, chief.
Hello. Good evening. Thanks for, got a few things tonight. Beautiful first day of fall today. Football season, Chiefs, football's going, high school football's going, NFL. Go watch some high school football, you'll enjoy it. Anyway, before we meet again, we have some fundraisers coming up. Our annual pancake breakfast at the fire station is scheduled for October 12th, and we'll be serving from 7:00 to noon. Flight for Life will be landing. We'll have lots of activities there for the kids. There's also a blood drive in the Augie Wilde classroom, and we're also going to have a booth set up there for some fundraising for our suburban critical incident team to raise some money for our police department and their truck. That also is, could be used to rescue each and one of us in the fire department or any civilian community member. So good stuff happening that day, October 12th. Mark your calendar. And then following that week, October 16th and 17th is our pizza delivery. Order pizza from Enters. We'll deliver a pizza in a fire truck, check your smoke detectors, give you new batteries, if you need batteries for your smoke detectors, and help you with any safety questions you may have. Pizza delivered to your door by the fire truck and firefighters. Outstanding. The pre-order sales will start on the 15th at 4:00. Check your local social media, and you should see all the information there.
Get your orders in.
Get your orders, they sell out in an hour or so. The orders, time slots sell out in about an hour, so get them in.
It's sold out every year.
Get them in. It's a great thing. We enjoy it. We love the community, and it's exciting to be able to do that. It's the week of fire prevention, which starts October 5th, so we'll have about 1,000 kids coming through the firehouse, getting educated on fire prevention. Stop down, and you'd love to see these kids go through that smokehouse, and if you have a moment, stop in, it's great. So that's all I have for the evening.
I have a question for you. Do either you or the police department do any kind of education for the kids on riding their bikes and hand signals and...
We do not at the fire department. I do not know if the police department...
You know, and if they ride on the sidewalk or the road, what's the rule for that? And because I know that was always...
That's a great question. We used to have a bike rodeo put on by the police department, but I'm not sure if we do that anymore.
I know Waukesha County Sheriff's Department used to train the kids, you know, how to do their turn signals and all that. I was just wondering if anybody does that anymore.
It's a great, great question. I do not know.
You could ask Waukesha County, they do it.
I do not, but that's...
Well, I only know because my dad was on the department.
No, I'm saying maybe...
So I was learning if we did that, because I, there are some people that really need to know the rules on riding their bikes.
I think it's the adults.
It is. It is.
Right, right. Well, we could add something that we can certainly look into. I'll look into it with the police chief and see if it's something that we could offer during the summer time.
You know, are they supposed to be on the sidewalk? Are they supposed to be on the road?
Right. Maybe we could even incorporate it with our summer rec program.
Are they supposed to be riding together?
They're supposed to be wide through downtown. And they need to stop at stop signs and...
Well, that would be, those are the adults.
I know it.
That's one of my...
I know.
It's why they have to...
That's why you open your door.
Yes, remember, if you're coming through Heartland, as far as I know, the bikes have to obey all traffic rules.
They can, they can ride on the sidewalk, don't hurt them.
Okay.
Get through.
Pancake breakfast? Pancakes and sales, remember. I'll be flipping them pizzas, ready to rock and roll.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Yep.
Hi, guys. As some of you guys are aware, we are an Ice Age Trail community. Coming up this weekend on Saturday, 28th, we do have an Ice Age Trail special hike. As some of you are aware, we have Ice Heartland Walking Club. They meet every all man. I think it's every second Wednesday and then every third Saturday. It's in the program guide. I was not expecting to do announcements today. I apologize. But we have a special hike this Saturday. If you want to sign up, we do ask that you pre-register, so we know how many people are coming and everything, because we do have a bus. The bus is picking up at 9:00 and 9:45 at Centennial Park. We're asking people to park there, get on the bus, and the bus will take you all the way to the beginning of the segment, the Heartland segment, which is by Nagawaki Park and Ride, and then you'll be walking. It's about almost seven miles the whole time. It's up and down, it's on paved, it's on wood trail.
Get those steps in.
Yeah, you'll get your steps, and do a little industrial park, do a little actually woods park, go through a neighborhood. So 9:00, the bus is leaving, and another bus is leaving at 9:45. And we have another special hike coming up, a moonlight hike on October 12th. It's over at the Cottonwood Wayside. We do have limited spots, so we ask for pre-registration as well. It's the same committee that's leading this hike, that's leading that one. We'll have a bonfire in the chimney, and I think someone's going to bring a fire pit because the bonfire didn't work out too well with the chimney last year.
Are you sure you're having that?